Welcome, everybody. It's just after six. We think we're ready to get going. Do we have everybody here? C waves. Yep, yep. All right. Well, let's call the meeting number at 6:03 PM. And we'll start with a roll call. We have everybody here. We have Mike Forrester, Brenda Olson, and Peterson. And we have Brittany Dawkins, Greg Larson, and myself, but also in attendance is Jerry Ness, Rudy Martinez, and Brian Corf. Ripley and Bill Simmons. So we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America, to the republic, to the citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. And before we get going, I'm going to read the notice again. And this will be the notice to hold teleconference meetings pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D David by zero two one. Due to the current federal state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic. By action of the school board of the Pelican Rapids School District, all future meetings of the Pelican Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means. And according with Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one, members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location via Zoom. The link to this meeting will be posted on our district website. Public comments for school board meetings during opportunity to visitors to speak may be submitted as follows. Any comments, Barb? So we're going to move on. First item up is going to be approve the meeting agenda. Mr. Ness, any changes or additions or removals that you're aware of? Or Mr. Corf? During that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting agenda of this.
Motion by Brittany. Second by Greg. Any discussion on the meeting agenda?
John, sorry, I was on mute there. Do you have the agenda that has technology director slash integrationist position on it?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, what number item is that?
That's under business items, and so it's number seven, and then C Charles.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other discussion about the meeting agenda? There are no discussions. It's going to be a roll call. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Brittany?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye. Mike?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Agenda carries. Opportunity to prefer visitors to address the board. Anybody, Barb? During that, we'll move on. Next item up will be administrative reports. We're going to have Mr. Corf do the elementary activities director and the high school principal. All right. Summer school, at the elementary school, they have sixteen students that are involved with summer school at elementary. They have two weeks left. And approved tonight, the position for second year was offered to Desha Johnson. She graduated Pelican Rapids High School. Has been teaching at Breckridge for the last two and a half years. Also offered her the head dance coach. That's his position approved tonight to Abby Frizanki, graduate of Pelican Rapids High School, just graduated from Minnesota State University of Morehead. And has been a leader of, a big teacher for sub whites for the last five years. Activities report was about seventy students in summer strength and conditioning. Just a reminder that last week, the weight room opened up. And this week, the state high school league coaches can work with their athletes following the guidelines that have been provided by the state high school league. So new state guidelines from June level meeting outside, so there's pods. So they want you to stick with your pod. If you're working like baseball soft or anything outside, new pod max is twenty-five students now. Inside, it's ten. Ball sharing, we'll do that. Athletes and pods can share pass balls to each other now. The priority should be that kids limit the number of touches on a given ball. Example, basketball group is doing passing work, then the same two athletes should share the same ball through the duration of that drill. And then the ball should be sanitized after each group, so. Next phase, you know, hopefully keep on getting back to what we used to be doing here, so. Things are changing quickly, as you can see with all the guidelines. About the high school part? Hey, that's a high school. Enrollment at the end of May was four hundred and twenty-two students. We started off the school year with four hundred and twenty-five, so we're down three students from the end of the year. Summer school, we have two weeks left at the high school. Just a reminder, with summer school and activities, everyone needs to come through door one. And they have a temperature check, and we have a questionnaire that we ask them for, like, any symptoms they have. If they're yes to any of those questions, or have a temperature of a hundred or higher, then they have to go home. So that's for summer school and any activity for the afternoon and morning. Social studies opening. Now, if the dean of students is hired, is approved tonight, then there would be a social studies opening, because that would be documented recommend for the dean of students. We open the position up. If approved, then we would hire next week, every hire. So that's the timeline there. Applications are due this Friday. So our activities, I talked about that already. June through August at the high school, got a lot of planning going on. July, we will be focused on what the fall is going to look like. There's a few different meetings going on. We'll start planning, and then think about what we need to do in August to get our teachers prepared for hybrid model, or distance learning, or face-to-face in the classroom. Again, the MDE is telling us right now that we have to be prepared for if we are face-to-face or a hybrid, also we're distance, that we have to be ready to change within a day, so. Staff development opportunities, I talked about that. This workshop, new teacher workshop, we'll have some new staff. And new staff workshop will be August twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. And then staff workshop will be August thirty-first through September third. First day of school will be September eighth. Just a little bit about the dean of students, just a reminder, dean of students approved will be in charge of transparency, discipline. The activities throughout the day, supervision, instructional leader. And there's Jim Christensen. Looking to hire him for about two twenty days. That would help for our teacher mentor program. New teachers, leading our PLCs, or professional learning communities, or BLT team, or leadership team, and then curriculum. So he'd be helping in those areas, and we're looking for twenty additional things for him. Any questions? How is the twenty additional days work scheduled? So what he'll do is he will write down what he has to charge, so for hours, he tracked all of his hours throughout the year. You have eight and a half hours per day. So that big bill moving on is normal. Yep. Teaching. Yep. We need a substitute. Yep, so he'll use Mondays before school. It's a prep time after school. So he'll use, plus some of this will be even before school starts. Like, mentorship program, that, he'll be helping me design that, plus implementing it, and I'll be at the new teacher workshop, and then he's going to hold everyone accountable with the new teacher mentorship throughout the year. So he'll have that. He'll be able to do that on Mondays before school, after school, through the blocks on Wednesday. We'll do that with who? Myself, and Mr. Nelson. We're looking to make our new mentorship program a little bit more detailed. Or in a packet. We just have checklists that we had, so we're trying to look at some designs. First of all, it was Hutchinson, and we'll see if, look at their designs, and then create our own. And every year, new teacher will go through this program and all the checklists. So then, where was a mentor for, you know, let's say, social studies, they have a checklist that's more, but they have to go check in. There's check it off in Google Docs. Any question from the other board members? Okay. Thank you. Next item, finance director, Mr. Martinez.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Oh. Okay.
There we go. Thanks, Bill. All right, so treasures report for May thirty-first, twenty twenty. Overall, was a pretty good month for ISD five forty-eight in terms of cash flow management, and I'll give you guys another brief summary in terms of where we are and what we look like, a very promising future. First of all, we started our investment account with three point three million dollars. We received eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of state aid payments. Closing at the end of the month, we had on our Miss Laugh investment account, four point two million dollars, very good, very healthy cash on hand. OPEB, again, we have a couple of teachers here that will take advantage now with the retirement of this OPEB trust, so within the next one to two years, we're going to see that OPEB trust eventually dissolve, because the two teachers that qualify for that benefit are now going to take advantage of it. But so far, we have a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in there, which will cover all of their OPEB benefits for that early retirement incentive, which is good. It's what that was bonded for. So total investments, four point three million dollars. That's cash on hand. Again, we're going to go in terms of big-ticket items that happened during the month of May. We received our tax levy dollars from Ottertail County, Clay County, and I'm missing one more, and Becker County. Close to about two million dollars. So then it's my job to, based on what we levy for, to then divide those funds per fund. So, for example, Fund One received eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of that levy, and then we work with the auditors to make sure that we reconcile the report with MDE, with our books, and then with the county auditors. So from here, I'm going to be pretty busy dividing those dollars up. But so far, this is a very good projection to give us an idea of where we are with cash on hand. Total accounts payable for the month of May were four hundred and fifty. You can see the breakdown per fund. Again, general fund is always the biggest consumer of our operations. Total payroll was two hundred and ninety-two. That was a little bit lower than normally what we have, and part of it has to do with coaches pay still kind of being on the line, and we'll get to that point a little bit. At the end of the day, we had one point seven million dollars cash on hand. That would be sitting in our bank account right now at Minnesota National. So why do we stress so much cash on hand? It's a financial measurement of how efficient we are in the district. I'm going to go back a year. A year from today, a year ago, and kind of give you guys a scenario of where we were last year to where we are this year. So last year, in the same report, we were at nine point nine million, or nine point one, I'm sorry. So that is punchy numbers in my calculator. So last year, we were at two point nine million dollars of cash on hand, and this month, this year, we're close to six. That means that we're now a very healthy cash on hand district, and we're going to continue to do more strategic embolments to make sure that we continue to do that. That means we can cover operations on month to month, especially you guys heard us talk about those dry months, especially January and February with payroll. So so far, it's looking pretty good, pretty promising. Again, all the great work that we've been doing in the last month or so, or the last year or so, it's starting to really show. So thank you all for that, that continued board of confidence to make sure that we do things well and hit that board goal of transparent financial practices. The petty cash account, again, not a lot of activity, just because we normally pay coaches, or I'm sorry, officials out of here. You know, we made nine cents in interest, and then we got a five-dollar service fee. And I'm fighting with the bank to make sure they give us that account for free. Hopefully, they do. But at the end of the day, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars sitting in that account. Do you guys have any questions about our treasures report and why we keep handling this very, very tight? Okay. We'll go on to the COVID cost. Again, we went all the way to May twenty-second with school in session. You see the cost here for COVID with payroll, food supplies, and all other additional supplies. It was mainly, it was mainly cleaning supplies that our custodian staff needed to make sure that they kept everything very clean. So at the end of the day, for the three months, that school was in session, and distance learning was, in effect, we had total expenses of five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Now, those are expenses that we would have assumed anyways, but for for recording purposes, everyone asked us to track them just in case that we've had some form of reimbursements or some type of federal programs coming in, in which they have. So I'm sure everyone got the email regarding CARES Act. Yes, okay, perfect. So this is where that played part. We were asked to submit all these expenses, and the federal government said, all right, let's divide some federal dollars. Meals served for the three months were over twenty-four thousand meals served for all of our students. Very typical, if we would have had just the national school program lunch happening. Again, we're submitting all of this through the food service application. That's what the state directed us to do. And we're going to start to see that reimbursement back from the food service program. So, so again, Fund Two is going to get a little bit of a cash coming in once the state pays us for all those meals, so. Very, very good tracking. Collateral, again, our bank provides us this report. Everything looks good. We have enough collateral for the amount of bank that we have. For the money, the dollars that we have at the bank, so we're not concerned there. Journal entries, just one quick journal entry where I got two programs confused, and they charged four hundred and eighty-eight dollars to one of our vocational programs, which was computer, computer science, which is what Mr. Rizba teaches. But then I adjusted the cost and put it to our ed program. So just a quick journal entry, if anyone's interested, why we do that is to make corrections where we make mistakes. Then it's all the payables. Again, you are going to see every kind of payable from wires to our credit card, to the checks. Big things that we paid, that we paid this month was our Lake Country Service contract with our ECFE coordinators. We hire them to oversee a lot of our early childhood programs, so that bill came due. That's why you see that big, big check there. Other than that, I'm going to stop a little bit and see if anybody has questions. Okay, well, that's all I got for you for the treasures report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, in terms of redundant, Mr. Ness.
I remember to go unmuting here, so, okay. Just wanted to go, we have a, on the agenda, we have a very large number of consent agenda items, so just and please, board members, as you're going through those, because there's so many, please ask questions as we go, but I do want to touch on a couple of them here. In under F with personnel, I think Mr. Corf talked a lot about them, the salary payment for spring coaches. I think most people around the area, Mr. Nelson did a lot of research. Schools went everything from twenty-five percent full. It was really across the board. But most coaches do a lot of training out of season these days, so therefore the reason they agreed on a fifty percent salary payment for the spring coaches. And then looking at Jay, the principal master agreement, you've approved that already, but what was recommended, Mr. Corf's role is different, so in that principal's contract, he's interim superintendent slash high secondary school principal. And what we want to do is make sure that if he ever goes to just superintendent, that the new person coming in would not have access to the same salary. It's a different position. So just corrected that. And we had a board member had a question on, if there's a chain of command, and if a teacher, for example, went to the principal, Mr. Corf, and had a a question on something, didn't agree with that, went up the ladder, well, Mr. Corf is the superintendent as well. So really, you're kind of joining those two things at once, so they would go to the board at that time. And any type of thing in a contract that Mr. Corf would be approving, his calendar, different things, he would just ask permission from the school board. And a lot of times, what you do is you designate, for example, Mr. Martinez, finance director, keeping track of Mr. Corf's days for if there was ever a question on if he put in the days, when his vacation days were, those types of things. He just takes a running log of days' work and shares that with Mr. Martinez, and then the board chair would always have access. So it is a little bit different in the chain of command, because you're joining one, one level. So just, just so you know, you just open communication, and is the key, key to that one. The MOU with the Pelican Rapids Education Association regarding the dean of students, and that is related to you're taking someone out of a classroom and looking at a new position, but Mr. Bergman, with this agreement, would retain rights and retain seniority and tenure in the EA. A lot of the other ones are annual renewals. We were meeting today, a couple of the admin. We're going to look, going to look at June twenty-fourth as an admin work session to really lay out the groundwork for our work sessions over the summer and planning for the school year. So we're going to get together in the district room and work on the school year, and hopefully we'll have all administrators. And then we'll also include Mr. Bergman and Mr. Christensen in the planning. A lot of it is just defining roles, duties, making sure everyone knows what their role is this year. That's what I have. Any questions?
I don't hear any. Great. Thank you. Well, we're going to move on to consent items. There are a number of them. First item will be for approved board meeting minutes. The meeting's on May fourth, May eleventh, May thirteenth, May fourteenth, May eighteenth, and May twenty-sixth. Next is financial claims, may bills. Next is treasures report. And then we have accept donations to SAD, Minnesota National Bank, Jean Machine, one hundred and fifteen dollars. SAD from Kind Gottes, fifty dollars. And accept the grant from the United Way for the summer splash program, two thousand five hundred dollars. And item E, acknowledge that Pelican Rapids schools will participate in the No Child Left Inside Grant through the DNR, along with Prairie Lake Association and the Pelican Rapids Public Library, six thousand two hundred and four dollars and twenty-six cents. Item F, personnel, hire Todd Hughesby for summer maintenance starting seven-one of two thousand twenty. Hire Doug Brugman as dean of students. Hire Abby Frizanki as an assist interventionist. Hire Desha Johnson as an elementary teacher. Also hire Desha Johnson as head dance coach. Hire Jim Christensen as an instructional coach for one hundred and seventy hours or twenty days. And then approve fifty percent salary payment for spring coaches. And GM, approve the agreement with Lake Country Service Cooperative for early childhood support services for fiscal year twenty-one. Improve the membership renewal with MREA two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one for one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And approve the program agreement with the United Way of Ottertail and Wadena Counties for ECFE Bright Start childcare visits for seven-one of two thousand twenty to six-thirty of two thousand twenty-two. And GM is principal master agreement change. NMK is MOU with Pelican Rapids Education Association regarding the dean of students position. ML, approve Lake Country Service Cooperative membership renewal two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. And approve IOWA identified official as authority designation for MBE, and that'll be superintendent Brian Corf, Sherry Verdon as backup. Item M, approve insurance renewal of AMP for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. And approve the engagement letter with Iain Bailey for our annual two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty audit. I'm going to approve said consent items reflected on the agenda. A motion by Greg. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion on the consent items? During the discussion, all those in favor, as we roll call again, signify by saying aye. Brittany?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye, Mike?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Consent items carried. Next item up, business items, approve the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one proposed budget. I think we got that.
Yeah. I'll share my screen again, just to kind of get a little bit of. There we go. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So again, we continue to develop the the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one. What we're starting to do at the district is we're starting to compile just a nice document for anyone that requests. Also, we had a little bit of a narrative to kind of paint a financial picture of what goals since the construction, the budget. And it's honestly what I spent the majority of my year on. So if anybody's asking, what is Rudy doing? This is that we have over twelve hundred budget line items, and we need to make sure that we budget for everyone correctly. And that is pretty much page thirty-five through thirty-seven. So if anybody, anybody wants to know what it is, so again, we'll just kind of go over it very quickly. Things to highlight, you know, we have all of our board officials, and then the new administrative structure that we talked about with the dates that will set in place. Again, this is the cabinet that kind of helps administer a lot of our, a lot of our decisions that are made within our district from a building standpoint. I decided to put the district goals, our mission, envision, and values here. Again, this is a comprehensive report of what are we doing as a district? So we take this that you guys decided on, and it's my job to turn that into dollars. And you're going to hear that in terms of my budget overview narrative. You know, it says that it's one of the most meaningful, useful, and meaningful documents, at least from the business standpoint, because I'm trying to marry all of the dollars that we get with those objectives. because I'm trying to marry all of the dollars that we get with those objectives that you guys as officials have. So some key highlights, enrollment, again, over the last 10 years, we still, we're still trending about a 6% decline in student enrollments. So we projected that by next school year, we're going to have 860 students enrolled. And then if you guys remember back to September, you guys approved for us to create a budget on 850 students, okay? And the reason why we go a little bit short is just the conservatism tactic that a lot of business managers do, in case we have any fluctuations of students coming and leaving the district. So at the end of the day, if we have 860 students and we budgeted for 850, hey, we're going to do better, okay? So keep that in mind. Also, here's just a little bit of history in terms of our resources of what do we get? You know, we get about $7.7 million from the general ed formula that accounts for about 47% of our revenues. In addition to, we're going to get about $1.6 million from levy dollars specifically for education. Here is the formula that's going to be projected for fiscal year 2021, so that is 65, 67 per student. And then here is a little bit of history regarding that formula increase. So I will say that by the next biennium, which will be '21, '22, and then '22, '23, we have received information that for the most part, the formula is going to freeze. So we have to be very strategic on how we're going to manage our dollars in the next, next two or three years. We, most likely, it'll look like a year like this, '09 and '10. All right, but the legislation did guarantee us the 2% of the funding formula for this coming year, regardless of the state's budget deficit. Other things in terms of key highlights, our levy, we're levying for about $4 million, of which $2.2 million go for our payments of our debt service that goes from our construction bond to all of, all of the other bonds that we have for utilities and all the other things that we have out there. We're going to receive about $891,000 in special education aid. Even though we spend a little over a million dollars, the difference comes from our general fund, and you guys hear that, that term called cross subsidy. That cross subsidy is pretty much the difference that we pay. We love, we love this program, and the state is doing its best to try to catch up with it, but it's never enough. Child nutrition, this is what goes into fund too. This is what helps us pay for all of our meals and pretty much all of our cooks and our food service director there. So we're projecting to get about 497. And then federal title programs, we're thinking we're going to get anywhere in the ballpark of about $295,000. Again, this is a little bit of a projection, it could be more, it could be less, but this is just kind of averaging three to four years and using their formulas. Again, here is the total of the levy, $4 million, of which 6, $1.6 million is going to go in general fund for education, and you've seen me reference that right up here. Other things that we have, you know, in terms of the number of funding that we get out of 495 schools and charter schools, we're ranked about 368. And one of the main reasons, again, it's student enrollment, is the type of demographics of our students, and that also depends on levies. So 368 out of 495, you know, we're, hopefully, hopefully we can do better. Here is us compared to the state average. We get, in terms of dollars that come in, about $1,800 from local levies. We get about $9300 from state aid, and then $360 per student. So at the end of the day, for the 860 students that we have, we get about $11,000, and the state gets about statewide average, gets about $13,000. So we have a little bit of catch-up to do, and a lot of the times that is through local levies. But I think we're kind of at the point where we max that out in our community. Just a little bit of analytics, so you guys can kind of wrap your hand in terms of why it's so important for us to go and advocate and be part of MREA. Here's just a general glimpse of how we spend those dollars from the general fund. So 57 goes into labor, benefits, services, supplies, and improvements. And then if you ask, well, what's in that 57%, 57%, 57%, here's the breakdown of that 57%. It goes through administration, regular education, vocational, and all the other programs. Here is the real big news for us, we're projected to have a general fund balance of $766,000. That is really good, we're just a little bit shy off of where we need to be. You know, we have a board policy that states that we want to be between 10 to 13%. That target is 980, $1.2 million, and we're 766. So we're just, we're getting there, you know, and, and we have, we have a little bit of room to do, and I think we will get there. But again, thank you, everyone, for continuing to support us as we, as we meet that goal. The capital outlay, you know, we decided to send this particular reserve fund balance into deficit, and the reason for that is so we could have cash on hand. Now with, with us restructuring a little bit better and having more capital dollars available, we should be, we should be out of deficit by, by the end of next semester. Again, open trust and open debt, we're not getting any new dollars. Instead, we do have expenses, so we can pay those teachers that just retired, and eventually these two will go away within one to two years. So here is all of the funds that we manage and what we are projecting to receive in revenues, what we're projecting to do in expenses, and then what we're going to do in terms of ending fund balances. And again, as we go through the year, you know, and this, my plan is December and March, going to give you guys an updated budget actual, so we can know if we're on track or if we need to do a quick budget revision. Things that we've done this year that were kind of high-ticket items, the passing of the operating labor referendum. It's going to give us, it's going to be for 10 years, and it's going to give us additional $303,000. That is really good for us, and it's good for our students, and it's good for our teachers to know that we have that money from our community support. Other things that we did, you know, we did the administrative restructuring where we, we presented this planning. Here is kind of the org chart in terms of what that looks like, and again, we're projected to save between 85 and 90,000, excuse me, 95, $85 and $90,000 there. And then the last thing, it's the expansion of the early retirement incentive, where because very experienced teachers retire and, and we hire a couple of young teachers with less experience, we're hoping to capitalize anywhere between $45,000 to $52,000 in savings and that. So at the end of the day, here is just a glimpse of that summary again, how it translates to numbers. Again, you know, we were going from a projected fund balance that was projected at $99,000 last year to actually, we're going to end in the ballpark of about 558. So we did tremendous, we added about 4% back to our fund balance, then projected. And then again, for fiscal year 2021, you know, we're projecting to be in at about the 7%. So great things are happening, still a lot of work to do. The hardest thing after we get to that goal is actually going to be maintaining it. So the hard work is not done. I'll stop now, and I'll pause for questions. Okay, with no questions asked, if anybody ever has, you know, if you, if you just want to deep dive into my world, feel free, jump into any of those budget lines, and we can have coffee and discuss, but that's what I got for you guys. And like I said, my job is to make sure that I give you guys all the accurate information, and if you guys have any recommendations, my door is always open, thank you very much.
Rudy, Greg's got a question.
Yes.
Rudy, I know this goes beyond the scope of the 2021 budget, but would you have a pretty good guesstimate as to what that budget would look like in the event the school district went to a five-day school week during 2021? I know that's not happening, but I'm curious as to what the savings is at this point to the district with regard to four-day versus five-day school week? Do you have any information that would be available to you right now, or is that something that you'd be able to follow up with the board on at the, at the next regular meeting?
Yep, very good question, Mr. Larson, at the moment, I don't have any information. We did have a past practice where we would do a four-to-five-day cost analysis comparison. With everything going on, I didn't have time to look into that, I'll be more than happy to. And we can share by the next board meeting in terms of what it is and what those costs are, just so everyone's on the, on the same page. So I'll put that on my to-do list, and I'll hand it out to the board in terms of what that cost analysis is.
You know, and it doesn't, we don't need to put it on next regular meeting's agenda, but I guess this is more so to the other board members. I'd like to kind of keep that discussion on the table earlier rather than later. I mean, versus finding ourselves next spring again and really not having discussed it and analyzed it in relationship to what our district goals are in relationship to our budget, our costs. So Rudy, I'm not requesting that you provide any sort of particular specific part of your report at next meeting, but I think I would really like to see the board have a discussion on that because it's been, it's been several months since we've really had a a thorough kind of investigation with regard to advantages, disadvantages, one way or the other. So with that said, Rudy, I just, I didn't want you to have to go through a whole process to specifically present, you know, a presentation at the regular board meeting in July to that. I was just curious whether right now you would have kind of a guesstimate. And I get that you don't right now, and I'm very fine with that. So I would, it's my personal opinion, you just hold tight on that, but I'd like to just use this as an opportunity to bring that up to the other board members to see what the other interest is in having that discussion, or at least hearing me and my opinion with regard to that discussion, perhaps this year versus having it put on the back burner and not really addressing it until it's too late so that another year goes by, without having a real deep, thorough, formal evaluation as to how things are going. So that's, I'll have to say with regard to that, but thanks, Rudy.
No, thank you, Mr. Larson. I think, I think the most appropriate time to bring that particular topic up would be in the planning session that we have scheduled here coming up, where all the board members are coming together with the admin team to plan about the next year. I think that would be the perfect time for us to kind of propose that topic and just kind of hear everybody's thoughts, and I'll try to get, I'll try to get something put together by then, so then we can just have an open conversation.
Thank you, good idea. Really, I just want to thank you, it's pretty clear to read your, your budget proposal, and I'd like the amount of work to put into it, looks really good.
Thank you.
And this needs approval?
Yes, it does.
I'm going to move to the group.
Who made the motion?
I can.
Okay, Ann makes a motion, I'll second that motion. And that's to approve the 2021 proposed budget. Any discussion on the proposed budget as presented? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, this will be a roll call, start with Mike.
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye. Budget carries. It'll be improved participation in the Minnesota Tax Aid Anticipation Borrowing Program. And Mr. Martinez, do you have anything quick to add on that? I know you've explained it in other meetings.
Yeah, so just a little bit of developments. When you guys kind of heard me talk about the cash flow piece, so when the special session went into effect, you know, we were a little bit concerned regarding what the state was going to do in terms of how much they might withhold. The latest information that I've received was that they guaranteed the 2% on the funding formula for next year, and as of now, they haven't, they haven't said that they're going to withhold more than their usual 5%, which puts us in a very good place, that means we don't have to necessarily borrow. The other thing is, when, when I was talking with the analyst at Baker Tilly, who we have to submit the application for, we did multiple scenarios with cash flow projections. And there is no month where we are very low or in the negative as compared to other years, which is very good for us to know that we are very efficient now with how we handle and manage our cash and our operating expenses. But for me, gives me a little bit of anxiety knowing what, how uncertain next year can still be. So my thought process is if you guys approve us completing the application, we can always withdraw the application before July 10th without incurring any penalties or fees from them. And that's, that was my agreement with Baker Tilly, was that I was going to disclose to you guys that technically, we don't, technically, we don't qualify for the program, but we still would like to be part of it in the event that the state comes back and says, you know, we're going to withhold 20 or 30%, at that point, we do qualify. So it's more of a safety net, and if we do, and if we do end up borrowing, we would only be looking about borrowing no more than a million dollars. The best news about that is that the $2 million that we borrowed last year, we did not have to use a single penny. The money's just set in our investment account, and in September, we pay it back, and that's that. So if we don't have to borrow, that would be great, and if we do, you know, I would like that safety net. So that's why we decided to keep it in the agenda, just as a last-minute precaution in case we hear otherwise from, from the state.
What's the penalty, Rudy, backing out after July 10th?
So far, at the moment, I think we would have to pay just the legal fees because they hire a legal company to do resolution, so I'm guessing it would be somewhere in the ballpark of about $500 to about $1,000.
It does sound like the special session should be done by the end of next week, so we should know well before July 10th if, if they're going to withhold funds and if we'd be cash short, so hopefully we'll know well before July 10th.
Makes sense, I'll make a motion to approve participation in the Minnesota Tax Aid Anticipation Borrowing Program.
Motion again? Mike, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, second, okay. Any additional discussion on approving participation in Minnesota Tax Aid Anticipation Borrowing Program? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, this will be a roll call again, Ann?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye. Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item will be approved technology director and integration position. And would be the,
He'll be leaving shortly, and Rudy can chime in here too. This is something we've talked to the board about prior. You know, Mr. Korf made the comment that we have to be prepared, be prepared for three scenarios where kids are in school, kids are in school in a hybrid, kids are not in school. That's a lot of time and energy prep with that, and then, and then if we do come into school, the possibility is we might, there might be a surge, and then you're not, so you're in flux. So you're in flux. So we, we've talked a lot about how we're, we're trying to put a team together that will be there every day to, to meet the needs of the students. And we think the technology director position and interventionist, so it'd be technology director slash interventionist. Is a position that we want to look at. We, we'd like you to approve this position. We'd like to open it. See what kind of applicants we get. We can, we can certainly still currently we're purchasing tech services. This position is, is purchased from Service Co-op, we can still do that. But just curious what we're at. So what we're looking for is more services at, at a reasonable cost that'll meet the needs of our, our students and, and especially our teaching staff. There's gonna be a lot of training going on with, with the online. So I'll just kind of, that's sort of an overview of, of that whole scenario and just answer questions. So again, you're not approving a position or a definite expenditure. What you're approving is basically a new position, posting it and then seeing if we can get a good qualified candidate. And then in July, you would be approving a, an expenditure in, in the person.
I guess if I, if there's, if we're not committing to anything other than exploring options to make sure we're in our best, best position possible for technology purposes, I'm all for it. I, I certainly, I want to move to approve technology director integration position.
Motion by Greg. You have a second?
Go ahead, Brenda.
I second.
Okay. And second by Brenda. Any additional discussion on approving the technology director integration position? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm gonna do a roll call. Mike? Anne?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
I'm, motion carries. Next item up will be school board retreat.
I, the, the doodle was inconclusive. How's that for an answer? We, we just, summers are busy time and, and to get everybody together, there just wasn't a date. We were always missing a board member admin. So, so as, as I looked at the calendar, I was doing some planning and, and looking at school. I'm wondering if we shouldn't just keep, we have a July sixth work session, which is a Monday night. And we have an August third work session. The sixth, we, we would focus on setting the goals and, and we're gonna push to have some measurable goals. So our buildings, buildings each level and down to PLCs and teachers can, can have measurable goals to, to help you reach the district goal. We can just add the agenda item here to explore the, the four to five day week. What, what would be the preference and, and budget there? And, and each principal, we're gonna be working on staffing and just basically laying out the year and, and kind of scripting the year for the board reviewing. There's lots of big items coming up. There's school board elections. There's, you know, the, the levy in September. The final levy in December, the, you know, there's just lots of things that are going to be happening. Talking about evaluation of the administrative structure sometime December, January. So, so I guess, I, I, I guess what I'm looking for is no motion. And, and looking that possibly just stay with the July sixth as a work session. We would probably have a, a special meeting prior to that so we could hire. If there's a social studies teacher higher, if there's a tech director, interventionist higher, we would do that quick and then go into the work session. And then the other reason keeping August third is with the states coming out with their plan by July twenty-seventh that week. Then August third, the, the admin can meet and we can then really lay out plans for the board and get approval for things on, on August third. So probably the work sessions might be the best route for us if that's okay.
Number for everybody? Opposition there, so.
That's what we'll plan on then.
Well, we have upcoming meetings, like we mentioned, July sixth work session, six P M. July twentieth, regular school board meeting, six P M. August third, work session, six P M. And then August seventeenth, regular school board meeting at six P M. I can't think of any other meetings out there. All entertaining, motion to adjourn. So, motion by Greg. You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on adjourning? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call. Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Aye, Mike?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, everybody.